I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called, and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time, if you'll please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing with us tonight, we have Pastor Andrew Fortner with Family Life Bastrop. He will be offering our open prayer for this evening. Thank you.
Good day, Father. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. God, we love you, we honor you, and God, just pray for your wisdom, your blessing, your guidance for our school board, our superintendent. God, we pray that you would just touch all of our teachers, our students, administrators. God, guide us and help us to just be the best that we can be and be who you have created us to be. And, Lord, tonight, we do want to remember our neighbors in the Hill Country that have faced some of the most devastating circumstances here in the last couple of weeks. So many people need you, they need hope, they need help, and, God, we've certainly seen central Texas and really all the nation come together and be loving neighbors that you've called us to be, Lord. We pray for every first responder, we pray for every family, and we thank you, we remember them. Lord, guide us now, give us wisdom, and we glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, we want to do a special welcome to Diana Green. She's our Human Resources Director. Welcome for accepting that, well, thank you for accepting that position, and welcome to the Cabinet. With us also tonight is Rhonda Crass, our Board Legal Counsel. Thank you for joining us here tonight as well, we appreciate it. All right, moving along here to recognitions. I believe Trustee Ruiz had some recognitions.
I do, and thank you so much, President Munching, for allowing us to do this. It's a little off our normal schedule. We usually recognize students about this time and others, community members and so forth. But tonight, I wanted to do a personal, kind of special one. I've had a time trying to determine and come to my own understanding about the domains and how our accountability works and just all the things that go into formulating our accountability for the district, overall ratings, et cetera. And so there are a couple of what I guess I would call unsung heroes that work for our district, and they've helped me a great deal this last year, kind of get my arms around it and my head around it. But I'd like to, and they're not here tonight, but I'm sure they're, Rachel's here? Rachel Repke, could you stand up for a second? Rachel's our Director of Accountability and Compliance in Curriculum and Instruction, and her cohort is probably a number of people, but Sean Smith, who's the Coordinator of Data Analytics, he's not here though, right, tonight? But you'll pass along my just recognition, and I can't really applaud you guys enough because I mean, normally, we don't see you. You're sort of backstage, you know, doing all the wonderful things. And not to steal TEA's thunder by any means, because we will have information released in the near term, but just to know that we are going to be seeing a significant increase in letter grades for several domains is very exciting, and I wanted to say thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Trustee Louise. At this time, we'll move into our open forum. The Board welcomes comments from district citizens and employees, individuals or group representatives who have signed up may speak, focusing on public education topics. Please note, the Board cannot discuss or act on any issue not listed on the agenda. The purpose of open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed at the appropriate time. The Board complaint policies aim for prompt, fair resolution at the lowest administrative level. Students or parents' complaints are addressed under Policy FNG Legal and FNG Local. At this time, I believe we have three speakers, so they will have three minutes in the order that I call them. And our first speaker is Luis Del Roso? Did I say that? DeRusso, yes, welcome, thank you.
Hi, I live in Cedar Creek, and I just wanted to ask, I know everyone's aware of the low grade that our district has been given, and I'm sure that the Board has a plan on how to address that and to improve on that. And I would really appreciate if your plan, if the public could see or know what that plan is, if that could be made public, if maybe you could talk to Community Impact or something like that to get the story out about what you're doing to address that and improve. And also, one thing that keeps going through my mind is I would personally would love to help, and I know a lot of the community would love to help, if you would just ask and maybe have that as part of the story that's put out to the public, is, you know, because I would be willing to volunteer and tutor students, to help them catch up. I'm retired, and I know several other retirees that have time during the day to go to schools and help, you know, tutor students, if that was, you know, possible. I don't know why it wouldn't be possible, we want to help. So, you know, and I did sign up for the mentor program last year, and I never got called. Makes me wonder, you know, why didn't they call me? But, and then it was kind of halfway through the year, and then it got late in the year, and they said, we'll just wait till next year. But instead of just mentoring, I just think tutoring would be much more useful to actually help these students learn and catch up. So I just wanted to put that out there, if you think about that part as part of your plan to engage the community, because I know there'd be, if you just asked, there'd be a lot of people that would come forward and, you know, help. Because we want the kids to be successful in our community. Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you for offering to volunteer. Ms. Torino has your information and we haven't, and she'll definitely be following up with you to see if you want to mentor this next school year and the also the other volunteer opportunities. And the Board was, as Trustee Louise mentioned, we were brought to a light some good news from the state after we had to get some clarity on things, and so that definitely will get that in Community Impact, but it is, it's improvements, so we're real excited about it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, our next speaker is Deborah Carter.
Good afternoon. I first want to request the response from the June 11th meeting when I spoke before to the Board of Trustees, if we could get, if I could get that. Also, I want to ask you, as the Board of Trustees, to help me to help you. I have worked with other members of Bastrop County for over two years to find ways that we can help BISD. I believe we can work together to create solutions that benefit all, from the students to the teachers to the administration. The community wants to help. I have talked with the parents in my works, and we all want the very best for the children of our county. Also, I have learned with other organizations that there are other ways to solving problems that BISD is facing today. So I invite you today to start conversations with us on how we can help our children be our priority one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will get that email?
Mr. Edwards, you understand what Ms. Carter's asking?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, our last speaker here is Jeremy Story.
In general, I know we're all here because we care about students. I know for me, I've worked with students for about three decades across the country at the high school and college level. We all care about kids, that's why we're here. As you know, I have a strong objection to how the Board seems to have had a habit for the last 13 years of evading competitive elections through uses of reorganizing the Board, COVID measures, and even just appointments of friends behind the scenes and then ratified in Board meetings. And it is to that last issue that I filed, as you all know, a lawsuit against the district because of the appointment of Mr. Coy. It's not about a qualification of Mr. Coy, I don't even know Mr. Coy at all. It's not about his qualifications at all. It's about transparency, and when we make appointments to the Board, that should be given public input, and it should be done entirely in front of the public, never behind the scenes, and decided before we get into a Board meeting. And what's demonstrated to many of us is that Toma was violated, the Texas Open Meetings Act, through conversations behind the scenes between a quorum of Board members to appoint a preordained person. What that does is it silences dissent on the Board. It silences those who are disagreement with you or who aren't your friends, and it creates a country-club type atmosphere on the Board. Why does that matter? Because then those who have difference of opinions that would bring newness to this district and life and greater diversity are silenced. And that affects children, which is why I'm here and which is why I sued you. You can't do that. It's against the law, and it hurts children, it hurts teachers, and it hurts parents. Here's what I am, as a pastor in this community, concerned about. I want to hold people accountable, but I also want to have peace. So as I sent to all of you today and to every administrator in this district, an offer of peace, that is a settlement offer to ask you to do something very, very simple. And that is that you would rescind the vote on June 11th of the appointment of Josh Cole and full compliance of the Toma, and in a process and create a process that creates adequate notice and then re-vote on it as public participation is required by law. BISD would agree to provide a minimum of 30 days' public notice in the future, an opportunity for public input before filing any future Board vacancy. That you would reaffirm and adopt a written policy of reinforcing full compliance with Toma, and BISD would produce without redaction all of the conversations that Board member communications related to the appointments and resignations over the past several years, three times that that has been done in this way, and that you would reimburse me for the very small amount that I've spent so far on the suit. That's a very reasonable, peaceful offer. And this community needs to know that if this lawsuit proceeds further, either at the district court level or all the way up to the state Supreme Court level, and believe me, I'll take it there and subpoena everybody, if we have to go that far, it will only be because of the obstinance of Board members or superintendents or whomever else saying that you want to persevere forward as opposed to some reasonable, peaceful solution to do the right thing. So ultimately, the ball is in your court, and I'll leave it up to you today. Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, we'll be moving into our consent agenda. Would any Board member like to pull any consent agenda item for discussion?
I would like to. It, the first one would be for the meetings, and it would be the June 11th special meeting as opposed to what was in the minutes. Maybe a clarification on where it says under number five. It says, "Following the administration of the oath of office, an incident occurred in which an audience member disrupted the meeting by leaving his seat to photograph documents handed to the Board Secretary." That to me, I read that as he crossed the room to go to the Board Secretary, me and Kelly, and that was not the case. I think he just took a picture over Noli's shoulder, and I did review the video. So I don't know, that's just a little misrepresentation, I feel.
Trustee Armstrong, do you have a recommendation as to what you think it should be phrased?
I would say, "Leaving his seat to photograph handed to the Board Assistant," as opposed to the Board Secretary, because he did not approach Kelly.
Well, what about Superintendent's secretary? How do you want that?
That's fine, too.
She just looking for clarity that he wasn't, that the individual wasn't taking picture of Ms. Trustee Seacats, it was Administrative Assistant, Ms. Roden.
We have no objection to that.
Okay.
What's on your, what's on your tag?
Administrative Assistant.
Okay, and on the name tag also, the one in front of you?
Yeah.
To be clear, Trustee Armstrong, you're looking for the clarification of the person that he took the picture over?
Yes, yes, yes. Just change Board Secretary, hand it to the Board Secretary, change Board Secretary to Administrative.
As amended.
As amended.
We have to amend them.
No, we're doing, let's pull it, let's pull this item as a separate motion, and so basically that would be.
There's been a motion made.
Yeah, Item A, we're going to pull from the consent agenda. Okay, so this time, I'll entertain a motion for Item B and C.
Oh, I have questions on that.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, St. David's. Um, just in there, it says, "The reports reflect the number of students receiving services on each campus." Well, I don't know who would answer this, but the reports, are they going to be stored at each campus with the MOU from St. David's? Is the dental? Yeah?
The dental services happen at one campus, so for, through the upcoming school year, the MOU, I believe they're planning to work with Bluebonnet Elementary, so yes.
All records will stay there?
Yes, so I think that St. David's collects general data about the number of students served. They do have student information in order to be able to contact parents, to get parent permission for those dental services, but other than that, it's just the numbers of students served and the services provided.
Okay, because it sure did seem like they went into students, student name, birthday, gender, I mean, a lot of data was collected, and I understand, reading it, that there's, you know, you're not supposed to share.
Correct.
I'm assuming there's never been a problem beforehand? Okay.
Right, we've had this MOU for the past two years, and we've worked with other campuses, so we have not had an issue with that. There's a data sharing agreement which covers all of those components, but from my understanding, they use that information just to be able to contact families and get parent permission.
What about, and also the access to the building, again, kind of going with the security, having someone, a non-employee, but I'm assuming they go through a background check?
Yes.
Do they have keys? How do we monitor once they get in the building?
They don't have keys, they'll have some way to access the building. They're only there during the school days when staff are there, and so by access to the building, they just want to be able to get into the building to be able to use the restroom facilities as needed. So we don't, we don't give them any kind of badges or anything, but we make the staff aware that St. David's Foundation is on the premises and that they have been background-checked, and the staff will, you know, buzz them in just like they would with any other visitor to the building, and they'll have, they'll have badges that identify who they are.
I think it's wonderful, I just, everything going on.
Sure, you want to make sure that all of those precautions are in place to protect students and staff.
Yes, exactly, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, no, okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for Item A only. We'll pull that from the consent agenda, and that would be to modify the Board Minutes, replacing Snolly's name as the, in the Administrative Assistant.
Okay, we're just doing Item A?
Just A right now, right, because we need to pull it to modify it.
That he did not have permission to take her picture?
What's that?
Can we add that he did not have permission to take her picture?
We can make any amendment.
Yeah.
You just have to make the motion.
Okay, so I move to, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and on Item A? Is that the proper wording?
Correct, well, just Item A.
Just Item A.
Did you want to amend the minutes?
As amended, okay. All right, so I move to approve the.
I'm going to move to amend the minutes.
I move to approve the amended amendments as presented.
Where should they state?
Leaving his seat to photograph doc, okay, to state, handed to the Superintendent's Assistant.
Administrative Assistant.
Administrative Assistant.
Is there a second for that?
Instead of Board Secretary.
Any other amendments to that motion? We have a motion on the table.
I would like to add, without permission.
Without permission?
Yes.
Okay, and what, what part of the minutes, so we can get a clearer reading of what we're doing here?
So my understanding is the motion should read that instead of this gentleman got up to take a picture of the Board Secretary, he got up to take a picture of something from the Administrative Assistant without permission. Does that sound?
That's, do you'd like to go with that motion, Ms.?
I would like to go.
No, no, just, okay.
I just wanted to, for clarity, wanted to restate it.
All right.
If you can amend it.
No, no.
Can I write it down? Yes, that is, that's the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. That leaves us Items B and C on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for Items B and C.
Second.
A motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Also, okay, moving along here to information items, which are the Board of Trustees' Calendar of Events, as well as Policy Update Number 125, and Revision of FNCE Local X, FD Local X, FM Local X, and EFB Local SLAC. Dr. Lee, would you give us some insight on that for the audience, please?
I do have just one update for the Board on FNCE Local X. It was important that we get this policy for your consideration on the July agenda so that it's ready to be approved for August, but since issuing the agenda on Thursday, we've received some additional important feedback and input from our campus administrators. This particular policy relates to communication devices. So I just wanted to let you know that the policy that we had, you know, worked with our policy consultant on restricted elementary school students from having communication devices at all. For secondary students, they could have them stored in their backpacks, but the additional feedback that we've received, and we want time to consider and share more information with you on, is, relates to elementary school students. And we don't have an issue with elementary school students now. Many of them have phones, and they already keep them in their backpacks. It's an important safety feature for parents to be able to know, you know, especially after school, when the kids are on the bus, maybe tracking exactly where their kids are. So we want to consider that policy of also allowing elementary students to have them, but to store them in their backpacks, which is what they're doing now. So I wanted you to know that that was something that we were looking at and would be bringing you potentially a revised policy in August. In addition, we've had a request to consider other storage options beyond a backpack as an option as well, classroom storage options. So I just wanted you to know that that could be coming to you in August.
And the way it's written right now, that would be, you know, they can't use it between classes in high school.
So there's, there's a difference of interpretation. So does the instructional day include passing periods and lunch? If it does, then no student at any time during the day would be able to use a communication device unless it was a part of an IEP, their Individualized Education Plan, or a 504 Plan, or they certainly could use district-issued devices, but a cellphone, a smartwatch, none of that could be used. So it could be possessed, but it can't be used during the school day. So before school, after school, when it's time for games, and extracurriculars, or riding the bus home, and we are going to get clarification, I think, on the law on if passing periods and lunch is part of the instructional day.
How's this going to be communicated to the parents and the students?
Very carefully and thoroughly.
Yeah, and these are definitely for information items.
Yes, information only.
I would encourage.
It won't happen until August.
Yeah, encourage any Board member that has some thoughts in regards to this to get with Dr. Lee before the August meeting, and if you have some thoughts there. All right, thank you, Dr. Lee, we appreciate it. At this time, we'll move into.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a couple more questions on the policies. And I'm just, just more clarification, and this one would be from Mike, and either now or you can send it to me, is CBA legal? It's the state and federal revenue sources, the state? And I'm just kind of curious, I went into it, it says, "A district is entitled to additional allotment as provided by the Educational Code associated with new instructional facility." Is, did we take advantage of that? You can get back with me on that one if you need.
No, it's an easy, easy answer. We do, every campus we've opened, we apply for NIFA funding, is how it's referred to.
Yeah.
And we're going to be doing that for Adelton by August 15th. The funding could be up to $1,000 per kid, so that helps in year one and two, unless it's prorated by the state. So, you know, 800 to 1,000 per student to help offset the cost of opening up a campus.
Is that, when do they count the students? I mean, is that the first day, is that the 12th day?
It's snapshot, typically.
So let's just make sure we all get there.
Yeah, it's typically reported enrollment.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I have one more, and I don't know if Christie can do this or Dr. Morris, on the establishment of the School Library Advisory Council, is that something that is in the process of, how is that going to be developed? Because I know that's a hot issue also, the library.
Yeah, so that's EFB Local, the SLAC, and it is, the reason why we brought it to you this month is because it is our intent to recommend that we establish a School Library Advisory Committee. The Board will each be asked to appoint a member to that Board. It must be a parent of a currently enrolled student. There are some other requirements, some other members can serve, like you can, their teachers can serve, a counselor can serve, an administrator can serve, but that would be in addition to the, at least seven members, and you all must equally appoint. So if you appoint one, you all appoint one. If you want to, if someone wants to appoint two, then you all must appoint two, and so on and so forth. But we will be working through that, and the SLAC would meet a couple of times a year to assist with advising our Director of Digital Learning and Library Services, as well as our librarians, our amazing librarians, on collection development and other things.
Thank you.
Dr. Lee, could school board members sit on that committee?
Ms. Seacats, I don't believe that that is a part of it, because, because you're going to be approving the recommendation of the SLAC. I hate, that's a weird name to be calling it, is SLAC. You would be approving, so it would be a little bit of a conflict, but those would be open meetings, so you could certainly attend, you know, a meeting as anybody could.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the information items? All right, that'll move us into our closed session. The time is now 5:59, and the Board will now convene in the closed meeting session to discuss the following items as allowed by the Texas Government Code, 551.071, Attorney Consultation, and 551.074, Personnel Matters. No voting will take place in this closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed meeting session will take place after the Board reconvenes in the open meeting, which will be in this room. We will now be moving to closed session in this room, and at this time, we kindly ask that the audience and the members please step out and wait in the foyer, and we will be inviting you back once the Board has concluded closed session. Thank you. you back once the board, uh, has concluded closed session. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move that the Board of Trustees for Bassdrop Independent School District name Dr. Christy Lee as Interim Superintendent of Bassdrop ISD under the terms and conditions as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Lee.[1036.25][1036.25](APPLAUSE). Mr. Edwards is still at the helm until the 31st of this month, and then he's definitely going to speed to the hills with his camper.[1051.58][1051.58](LAUGHTER). And then Dr. Lee will be at the helm, and we look forward to it and appreciate you working with us through this superintendent search, which will be named at the end of the year where we land on our feet. So anyways, thank you very much. Excited to have you aboard.
Thank you very much. (LAUGHTER).
All right. This time, we're going to move into Board Team Building. As part of the Board requirements, continuing education, we engage in an annual team building process. This evening, we are pleased to welcome Rhonda Crass from Lasser Crass, PC, who will be leading us through the following listed agenda topics: Board Governance, Constitution Relations, and Superintendent Search Process. Welcome.
Thank you. It's always good to be here. Here we go. Oh, look. I love it when the plan comes together. All right. So let's talk about your roles and responsibilities. You know, the three most important functions you have, if you look over in your board policy, B, it talks about all the different things that you do, but the three most important things you do in terms of roles and responsibilities is to hire the superintendent, set your policies and procedures, and to set your tax rate. And those are the three most important things you do. Now, I'm going to tell you, over the years, I've, you know, I shared a little bit with you my history. Over the years, I'm going to tell you what good school board members look like. They have a clear vision for the district. They measure the superintendent's goals and the success of the district based on data. They communicate their actions to the community, and they keep the public informed of the district's process. They work as a team. They collaborate with others. They are respectful of other board members. They don't put their own agendas first. They adopt a fiscally sound budget. They pay attention to finances. They regularly monitor the fiscal health of the district. They focus on what's best for all students. All students. Not just some students or students that are important to me or the kids that go to my high school. All students. They advocate at the local, state, and national level for public education. That has become one of the most important things you can do as a board member now, is to advocate for public schools. If you see any of these signs, you know you have a board member that may need a little additional training. A school board member that focuses on one issue. They just, they get something in their brain and they won't stop, or they just talk aimlessly at meetings. They don't conduct themselves in respectful manners. I've actually been to board meetings where board members have gotten up off the dais and had fights and called each other names. I know you find that odd, but it does happen. They're not respectful. They're not collaborative. School board members that come to meetings unprepared because your superintendent can't look at you, his boss, and go, "If you'd have just read the agenda, you'd know the answer to that question." So they pay attention. They come in and they rubber stamp everything the superintendent does, and they don't ask the hard questions all the time. If they micromanage rather than focus on district-wide policies, you don't need somebody who's driving around up here around the school looking to see if the high school principal's, you know, vehicle's in their spot, or if the baseball field is mowed, or those kind of things. The really worst kind of school board member in my mind is one who uses their position to put forth a political agenda that has little relevance to student achievement. Everything you do, everything you do as a board member should be related to student achievement. Some goals that you ought to think about is, you know, respecting the majority after the vote. I've got one board, and they have a board member on there that doesn't agree with the majority of the board, and every time there's a vote, the next month, they ask that same agenda ought to be put back on. I'm like, well, you can, but again, it's going to get voted, I mean, nobody's changing their minds. So respecting the majority. I think it's important to respect the opinions of all board members. You all each come from different walks and areas of life, and you all have different experiences, and so I think the opinions of the board members individually can really increase a board's knowledge and help them work toward their goals. Agreeing to make decisions based on information and data. Emotional decisions don't work. That's why they bring you data all the time to let you know. I think you need to agree to keep things confidential as required by law. In fact, when we do your legislative update, probably in August or September, we'll talk about the new confidentiality rules and the penalties associated with them. Not agreeing not to participate in a walking quorum. And that's, a walking quorum is like, you know, Priscilla calls Kelly and says, "Hey, I think we ought to do this. What do you think?" Kelly goes, "I agree." Kelly goes, "Well, I'm going to call, you know, Josh and see what he thinks about it." And the next thing you know, you've deliberated, even though you're not all four together, you've done deliberations outside the boardroom. I think you need to agree on a note-taking policy. You know, who's going to take notes? What notes are you going to take? What are you going to do? Some effective signs of board members: Going solos and no-go. You don't get to do your own investigations. You don't get to decide that you're going to go look into something. I think you have to respect the team. I think you have to understand the difference between your role as a board member and the staff's role in the organization. I think you can share and defend your views, but I think it's equally as important that you listen to the views of others. It's okay to have your opinion, but I think you need to be open. I think you need to do your homework, ask tough questions. You need to respect your oath, and you constantly need to keep learning. For those of you who've been on here for a long, long time, even though you've been on here for a long time, you still learn all the time. You're still learning new things all the time. Effective teams have a shared understanding and agreement on their purpose and their vision and their goals, their roles, their procedures, their approach to problem solving, and how they're going to determine whether improvement has occurred. If you have an environment that supports open communication, and you're willing to let all board members fully participate, I mean, I've been in board meetings where clearly it was a 5-2 board, or a 4-3 board, or a 6-1 board, and they just pretty much shut that person down. "We don't want to hear your opinion." I think you let all members of the board participate. I think you manage your conflict through dialogue, not in, you know, punishing each other. And I think you have to develop trust and respect and understanding, and that's kind of hard to do when you start looking at your team. You know, when you start looking at your teams, if you get quiet when you disagree, that means you're not willing to share and be open and be vulnerable. I think it's important that your board president makes sure that if two or three people are talking, that he shuts them down so we can hear what one of the other individuals is saying. I think you share new information with newly elected board members. And I think you share, by developing your goals as a team, you share your expectations with the superintendent, but also think you consider the superintendent's ideas. Here's an example. Superintendent meets with the board president on a routine basis. Superintendent communicates to all board members, and you find out how that works best. They communicate and inform the board in a timely manner. And the board keeps the superintendent informed as well. Like, you don't go out and handle problems on your own. You call the superintendent, let the superintendent handle it, because let me just tell you, that check you get every month as a board member, you're going, "What check?" Yeah. You don't get a check as a board member. This is a volunteer position, so let the superintendent take care of the problems. This is, this is an interesting piece here when you start talking about your role and your responsibility. You know, you always have the right to speak to the media as an individual, okay? But here's the thing. Once you're elected to the board, you got a board member hat on, and it never comes off. So if you choose to speak to the media, if you choose to speak to your friends, your Sunday school class, a group at a ballgame, you always need to make sure they understand that you're speaking as an individual and not for the board. I think you remind any media representative that asks you a question that official statements are made by the board president or the superintendent. Period. I think you can always remind the media of the position or action of the board related to the issue, and if the, if the district superintendent, I mean, I think you tell the superintendent if there's a media request prior to making any statements. If you get a media request from, from the media, I think you need to work through it with your superintendent and your board president to make sure you, as a board, are all in agreement. Board operating guidelines, and I, I'm not sure if y'all do that in August. Is August when y'all normally adopt them? In December. Board operating guidelines are, it's how you are going to agree to act as a board. Operating procedures and guidelines are the same thing. It addresses the issues that aren't covered in policy, and it's an agreement as to how you plan to operate as a board. They should be reviewed and updated every year because you may need to change some things in your board operating guidelines. Some things that you might want to address are seating new board members, how many board members it takes to put an item on the agenda, how you get access to information. You don't just wander around up here in the building and start asking people for information. You typically go through your superintendent. Who's going to be the spokesperson for the board? How you select your officers? Who's going to be your officers? Do you have to have experience to serve in an officer position? You talk about your visiting campuses. Again, if you go on a campus, you're always a board member, and I will tell you, don't go into a classroom. It makes the teachers really nervous. You need to let principals know if you're coming. If you show up unannounced, they think you're doing an impromptu investigation. I would let the superintendent know. Even if you're a parent, you can let the principal know, "Hey, I'm coming up there as a parent. I need to bring my kid lunch," or something like that, because no matter when you show up, they're looking at it as, "Oh, there's the board president. Wonder what he's looking for?" It doesn't matter. You're always a board member, no matter when you show up. I, a lot of districts will select a committee to revise their current ones. They review them and adopt them annually following your board elections. Y'all do it every year in December, so that's good. There's not a specific format you have to do. I've seen them 54 pages long, I've seen them seven pages long. If you wanna know what other boards are doing, most of them have theirs online, you can look to see if there's things you wanna take away. One of the things I like boards to do is a self-evaluation, okay? So, it's difficult, especially when you have three members up one year, two members up one year, and two members up another year, because it can change. But, true self-governance begins with a leadership position in the board president. You guys have a great leader. He's been here a long time, he's got experience. It also can be difficult depending on the social, cultural, and political makeup of the board. Over the years that I've been here in Bastrop, I've seen y'all be a very cohesive board, and you didn't let your social, cultural, and politics get in the way of doing what's best for kids. Your duties are distinct, and you have to work effectively as a collaborative unit. You've gotta recognize your role in establishing the vision and goals, and adopting policies, and setting priorities. You also have to recognize the individual trustee's duty as a trustee, and, you know, your job as an individual trustee is to review the information. You also have to act in concert with the majority. You need to remain focused on your goals, that's a big part of the team. You annually evaluate your performance as a team, and you make decisions at properly called board meetings. I think the annual evaluation piece is very important for a board because it gives you an opportunity to talk about the things that are working for this board and are not working for this board, and the things that you can do to improve as a board. You respect the rights of individuals, you develop teamwork, and you, you agree to a, you know, you, you develop board operating guidelines, but if you don't follow them, what do you do? So, it establishes your local policies, your procedures, it understands the leadership role of your board president and your other officers, and what those responsibilities are. I'm gonna talk a little bit about why we need local school boards in control. Because, as I've said for years, it's your kids, your town, your money, okay? And the local school district is elected by your local citizens, and so you need local control because the public has placed their trust in you to anticipate and develop the needs of the students, and put in place policies and plans and goals. You wanna do things that are in line with your community values. School districts are elected by popular vote, whether it's plurality or whatever it is, I think y'all are plurality, right? Or you place, your places, okay? Traditionally, you serve three or four-year terms, depending on whether your terms are up in May or November, and your, your elections, there's three types. The most, most popular type is places. Plurality is when there's three spots open, and the top three vote-getters get on the board. Plurality is really going by the wayside in most, in most districts now, except in really small places where they have a lot of trouble getting people to run for the board. Places is what you do. You are each in a place, and so when you sign up, you sign up to run in a place. Single-member districts, that's really hard. It's based on where you live, and boundaries are drawn, and you have to win by at least 50% or there's a runoff. The school board governs the district. The superintendent runs the district. They manage the district on a day-to-day basis. Everything you do as a school board has to be in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Now, we've talked about your Team of Eight training. The purpose of that team-building session is so that y'all can enhance the effectiveness of your, of your activities as a board. Training is a good place to provide self-governance in what board members can and can't do. The self-assessment marks your first step towards growth, and it also, the input that you get uncovers the strength in the growth areas. It also provides an avenue for an open discussion about self-governance. It also helps you monitor the public's perception of you, because, you know, one board member will say, "Well, I get phone calls all the time." You know, "Everybody's calling me." Okay, how many is everybody? "Well, I never get phone calls." Well, a lot of, those are the questions you answer, the whys and the what-fors. If you don't self-govern, though, here's what can happen. If you don't take care of business and self-govern, if somebody's talking outside a closed session, if somebody's conducting an investigation outside their scope of a board member. The commissioner has the authority to appoint a monitor, a conservator, a management team, or a board of management, board of managers. The monitor reports to the T E A and says, you know, "Here's what the board's doing, here's what the superintendent's doing." I think they charge 850 a day, and they stay as long as they feel the board needs oversight. Conservators come in and pretty much oversee the operations of the district. A management team directs the operations of the district in the areas of significant ins- insufficient performance. And if a board of managers comes in, they pretty much tell y'all to go to the house, and they appoint people to sit in your seats. So, it can get, it can get bad. The commissioner can appoint a monitor or conservator of a school district if you fail to satisfy accreditation criteria, academic performance standards, financial accountability standards, or, and here's the kicker, on the basis of a special investigation, okay? So, that's a pretty wide range for the commissioner to have the authority to come in. So as a board member, I'm gonna tell you, you need to do what's right in your role as a board member, because when you start acting outside of your role as a board member, that right there is the, could be the basis of a special investigation. Monitors and conservators support recommendations, and the job is to oversee the school district in correcting the identified deficiencies. Make sure that you are ensuring sustainable si- sustainable systems, and that you're operating for future success. A lot of times, there is an agreed corrective action plan, the monitor will help the district correct, do a corrective action plan, and the monitor will stay until all the actions have been completed. Conservator placements are reviewed every 90 days to make sure you're doing what you need to do. Now here's some ways the board gets into trouble and conflict, all right? Resource allocation. You get to adopt the budget. You get to decide how you spend the money. This is where your citizenry comes in a lot of times, too, because you get to decide, "Are we gonna spend our money on instructional materials and, and stipends for recruiting good teachers, or are we more interested in buying the best band uniforms, and do we want the best ag farm, and do we want buses with wraps around them so everybody knows Bastrop's coming down the road?" So, funding priorities and resource distribution, that, that's a big thing for the board. A lot of times, the community will disagree, or community members will disagree. You get to decide where you spend your money. Interpersonal relationships, you know, Bastrop's a big district, but you're still a small town, right? And sometimes relationships and conflicts arise between people based on their, their belief systems, or, or their value systems, or, you know, "We all grew up here, and I didn't like you in high school, and I don't like you now." So, communication breakdowns, you know, if, if, if you don't have good communication between yourselves and with your superintendent, if you don't have good communication with your community, if you're not putting out there the things you're doing, those communication breakdowns can get you in trouble. Differences in perceptions, you know, "Well, I think we should do, I believe this, I think we should do it this way." How it happens, you know, your stakeholders in your community, your community relations can sometimes be affected based on differences in perception. I know in the community I used to live in, the city passed a big bond issue to build a, a, a big semi-pro baseball stadium in the community. And the next, that was in November, and then in May, the school board tried to pass a bond election. And I had some friends that were very educated, and they said, "Well, they just built that big, that big baseball stadium, and they hadn't even fixed the roads yet. I don't, I'm not voting for the school bond. They hadn't even done what they said they were gonna do before." Well, that'd be great, except the school district doesn't fix the roads, that's a city project. And that big baseball stadium they built was for a semi-pro team, not the kids in the school district. So, just making sure that the perception is there and the differing opinions are cleared up can help a lot. Management styles. You know, if you're the CEO of a major corporation, you're used to a different management style than, you know, a, a retired teacher, or a Mary Kay salesperson, or somebody who owns a small business in town, or, you know, your management style is different. If, if you run the household, and you're used to running the household, you can't necessarily come in here and run the board. And a lot of times, a lot of things happen because of external pressures, changes in legislation, societal expectations. Just think about this. Our expectations today are very different before Co- than before COVID hit, right? That changed everything. So, legislation, societal expectations, educational trends, I mean, we're, we've got vouchers now. How is that gonna affect us? And, and so, those external pressures are things that can cause conflict. Some best practices. Set you some goals. If you set goals, clear vision and goals, and you work towards those, things'll be okay. If you developed robust policies, especially setting clear vision and goals as a way to deal with your constituency. If they know what you're working on, rather than you're just up here floundering around once a month, it really helps allocating your resources wisely. You've got good people in your central office that are gonna help you do that. Assuring accountability, you know, if, if you ensure accountability, and you monitor and you evaluate, and even if you have negative data, it's okay, we're using the data for continuous improvement. And again, the continuous learning, committing to ongoing professional development, staying informed of best practices. Those are the things that, that are gonna help you be good. Building community relationships. You know, if you're willing to talk to your constituency and you build positive relationships, that's gonna go a long way. And I think practice, practicing ethical leadership. If you demonstrate integrity, transparency, and ethical behavior as a board member, I think that goes a long way in building your community and your constituency relations. Communications and public comments. You know, you, you have to give the public the opportunity to speak, okay? But just because they speak in open forum, individual board members, you don't comment or commit on any issue. If they bring concerns or complaints, the board president can refer them to the superintendent or another appropriate administrator for handling. These are good ones. This is kind of a little quiz. So, can do, can't do, should do, shouldn't do. So, a board member, blank, handle complaints given to them about individuals, teachers, or staff. The answer is should not. You should not handle complaints, all right? Not a good idea. Address the actions of other board members who are acting outside their scope. You not only should, I mean, you not only can, but you should. I mean, you seven have to govern yourself. Participate in social media as it pertains to school business. You can. Should you? I don't know. I'm not a big social media person, but some people are. Can you, as an individual board member, tell the superintendent who needs to be hired and fired? Well, some board members do, but you shouldn't do it. If you've got a complaint about an individual employee, then you, you can express your concern about that employee, but once you turn it over to the superintendent, that's off your, that's off your radar. Participate in interviews for key positions such as assistant superintendents, or athletic directors, or some of those big key positions. If you don't trust the superintendent to bring in the staff, you, you have a problem. So, can you? Sure, you can, but should you? I don't think so. Discuss district business with your spouse that was discussed in closed session. No, you may not. You should not. Don't do it. Just don't do it. Respond to questions from the public about board decisions made in open session. I think you can say, you know, "The board reviewed all the data, and this is the decision we made." I don't know that you, I, I don't know that you need to offer an explanation as why you personally voted for or against something on a board agenda. We, as a board, reviewed the data, and we, as a board, made this decision. Responding to questions from the public about superintendent decisions. I don't think you should. You hire him to run the district, if you got complaints about him, or you don't like the way he's doing things, that's a different story, but you shouldn't be out saying, "I can't believe he hired so-and-so to do this, and I can't believe he, you know, let the football team, you know, do this or do that." Should a board member tell district employees how to disperse booster club donations? My guess is, please don't be an officer in any booster club. Please don't. 'Cause you still have on your board member hat. I, I know in small communities, that happens a lot, but, you know, board president doesn't need to be the head of the booster club, just saying, "Not a good idea." Whether it's the ag booster club, or the athletics, or the band, or the cheerleader, or whatever, I wouldn't recommend you do that. Should a board member make every effort to attend board meetings to participate as an active board member? Absolutely. There's nothing more frustrating to, to the rest of the board and to a superintendent if you run for the board and you make two meetings a year. You make the Christmas party, and you make, you know, graduation. I mean, they need your input. You signed up to run for the board. They need you there. Let's talk a little bit about the search process, because that's coming up for you. So some of the things you're gonna need to do. You're gonna need to establish your timeline, so that's one of the first things you'll do. It differs from district to district. I think you establish your timeline because it, it helps transparency within the community, with the candidates who are applying, and it allows everybody to manage their expectations. So I think that's a very important piece, is establishing your timeline. The schedule also will allow the community and staff to know what the board expects for the succession and leadership. Again, your kids, your town, your money, you get to decide how fast or how slow. I've seen boards say, "You know, we know who we want, and we're just gonna, next month, name a lone finalist, and we're done with it." You can do that. You can do that. The other thing you have to decide as a board is opportunities for engagement, all right? So, do you wanna hear from your community? I've had school boards who have said, "Look, we got elected to do this, we don't need the community's input." A lot of boards will say, "We'd like to see what the community thinks are the issues, and are the problems, and are the good things, so that we know how to build a profile of what we want our next superintendent to look like." So, you get to decide. Do you wanna do surveys for your staff, and for your communities, and your parents? Do you want to take individual surveys? You know, you have to decide what that looks like. Because for you as a board, you know, that is your job, is to select the next superintendent. The question is, what's your timeline, and how much input do you want? Now, a lot of times, boards want a lot of input. I mean, I had one school board, I met with the long-range planning committee, I met with every, I met with every president of every PTO on every campus. We had a big meeting. We had a retired teachers' meeting. We had a district-wide staff meeting, we met with principals, executive team, leader cabinet. I mean, if, if there was a, we met with, we had a, we had a county and city officials' meeting. So, all the county commissioners, the county judge, all the city councils, they had several cities within their district. But, we met with all of those, every city council member and mayor, all of the commissioners, county judge, we had a meeting and we took their input. They wanted a lot of input. I've had some boards that have said, "You know, you can put a survey out there, but don't do it for long, because we know what we need." That's your job. That's what you were hired to do. We talked in the very first slide about your three most important goals. The first job, your first and foremost, is to hire the superintendent, set the policies, and then to set the, the tax rate and, and develop a budget. But, there's lots of op- But there's lots of opportunities for engagement. You get to decide how much that is. Now, when you start looking for your next superintendent, I think it's important to develop a profile of what you need. I know when, well, let's just take from when you came on board to your predecessor. There were different needs there, right? Probably different needs today than when you came on board. And so it's important to develop with input from your community what you're looking for in a superintendent. What is most important to you? Do you need somebody to fix your scores or repair your community trust? Or, you know, come in and be a cheerleader for the district? Or, you know, fix your money? Or, you know, help you hire qualified staff? It keeps your board, as you, as individual board members, go through the process of determining what that next superintendent looks like, it helps you keep your focus on those specific traits of what's most important to you. And it provides information about what makes your district great, too. Your application. Different firms do different applications. You will need to decide what you're looking for and how you want that to happen. One of the things that should happen is you will have an agenda for each specific meeting posted. So the community and the board, not just the board, but the community and the staff and the candidates know what you're looking for. What are you going to do at this meeting? Are you going to establish your timeline? Are you going to review applications? Are you going to interview candidates? Are you going to name a lone finalist? And so having those specific meetings is going to help you. Specific agendas is going to be good constituency relations with the community. I'm going to recommend that when you start your search, you have your communications person dedicate a page so people can go online and look at that profile and look at what the survey showed and look at your executive summary of all the meetings that you had. That way, your community knows what you're looking for and they know what you're doing. Contact with the applicants. You know, typically, your search firm will schedule the interviews to avoid any implication of preferential treatment by the board. They'll notify those who don't get an interview. They'll notify and schedule those who are not named as a lone finalist. And I think that communication piece throughout the process not only helps the transparency piece, but also helps with the expectations. Now, here's the thing that's kind of interesting. Only board members are allowed to know the names of the actual applicants for the superintendent position at Bastrop. So we call it a confidential search. So if you had, you posted the position for a high school principal, I could do an open records request under the Texas Public Information Act and I could say, "I want to see every, I want to see the application of everybody who applied for the position of high school principal at Bastrop High School." That subject, I mean, some of the information can be redacted, like home addresses and things. But you would have to provide that information. You can't do that with a superintendent. They don't get to see, the community does not get to see who the applicants are, all right? Now, some things sometimes happen in superintendent searches. It's supposed to be a confidential search. But if somebody really wants to get tricky and apply for the position, they start telling people they know in that community. And those people start, for example, in one of the searches that we did, somebody knew the pastor at the church and they called the pastor and said, "I'm applying for the job. Can you put in a good word with me, with the board?" Well, pastor called up the board president and said, "Hey, my friend's applying. He's a great guy. He's a good Christian man and I think you need to consider him." Well, that individual did not get an interview. And so the preacher calls back to the board, "Why didn't you interview my friend?" So it's not good to let political pressure, political pressure, guide you as to who you select. The community does not get to know who's applied. They don't get to be part of the interview process, nor do they get to know who all interviewed for the position. So, you know, we talk about, we're going to try to make things as transparent as we can throughout the process. However, legally, you cannot reveal the name of an applicant for the position of superintendent. The reason it's confidential is, you know, I'm just use Barry Edwards as an example. Let's say the position at Austin ISD came open and you wanted to apply for the position. If it weren't a confidential search and word got out, well, he's applied for the Austin job. Well, then everybody here is going to be going, "Well, if you don't want to work at Bastrop anymore." And so it damages the role of the superintendent or the person where they're at. I don't think it's a good idea to have community members reach out to members of the board. Now, if you know somebody, you know, you can contact the consultant and give them direct information. If you know somebody as a community member who's not a good fit, you can reach out and contact the consultant as well. The law requires you to name a lone finalist. Years ago, you didn't have to do that, but now you do. So you will actually, when you decide who's going to be your superintendent, the law requires you to post that name, which you do in the minutes of a board meeting, but to name that person the lone finalist. And you can't hire that person for 21 days. So you have to wait 21 days before you can hire that person. That's the public's time to vet that person. Let me tell you how that works. Somebody's going to internet stalk them. Google them. I'm not good at all that stuff, but I know people who are. Boy, they can find out anything you want to know about somebody if you give them the internet. But that's the time when the community gets to go, "Well, did you know that he was married to a lady who had a pot farm in her backyard?" Well, good to know. We didn't know that as a board. You should know all those things, you know? After you select your lone finalist, that name has to be public for at least 21 days. So you will come out and make a motion to name so-and-so the lone finalist. That's in public record. It's public record. And at that point, you cannot hire that person or put them under contract for at least 21 days. Now, during that 21-day period, that's when the board will negotiate with the new superintendent what the contract's going to look like. So it's a little different than it was many years ago. But now you have to publicly name somebody for at least 21 days before you can hire them. That went pretty fast. But do y'all have any questions about that? And I've got my contact information out. If y'all have questions, I will answer them, just so you know. But if you've got questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I just say, I'm glad we have an audience. We do this in December and we call a special meeting and no public shows up when we're talking about goals or input and doing this type of training. And so for a lot of us, we hear this at our edu, you know, we have to get our continuing education hours in San Antonio or Dallas, wherever we're going to get them. Plus, we wanted to start this process outright. And so a lot of the things that Ms. Krass mentioned, there is a timeline that the board will be looking at and they're aware of it, kind of looked at a draft. And building a profile, community meetings, community input, things like that. And also from not only the staff, but the community, to constituents in the community. That we want to do this right. We had a lot of success when we found Mr. Edwards going through that process. And it's really, we're going to start with a profile from scratch, which will be geared around our goals and things like that. So wanted the public to definitely see this. I knew there'd be a bigger audience here at this meeting versus us calling a meeting to go through that. And so.
Well, and it's also important, too, that the public know that even though you're going to be as transparent as you can about the process and your timeline and the profile and the data that you get to develop the profile, you still can't put the names out there. You still can't have a community committee to help you screen the applications because that's not permitted by law. Many people don't know that. And so I think it's important for the community to understand that as transparent as you're going to be, there are just some things you can't divulge based on the law.
And we're mandated, when we talk about personnel issues, to go into closed session.
You are required to go into closed session to talk about personnel issues. Yes, that is correct. So, but it's always good, it's always good to have a little refresher of, you know, what does the search process look like? What can we do? What can't we do? What's our role? What's our responsibility? And I always like to broaden it just a little bit, more than just the role and responsibility during the superintendent's search. You've got roles and responsibilities, you know, every day as a board member. And keeping those roles and responsibilities in the forefront will make you a better board member. And, you know, just, I don't know if your community knows it, but you don't get paid for this job, number one. And you have to have, you're a new board member, right? You've got to have a lot of training in the next 90 days. A lot. A whole lot of training. Like, I think it's something like 14 hours. So if you think about that, and that's clock hours. You've got to sit there for 14 clock hours and there's very specific training that you have to give. And you have to get very specific, I mean, you have to get your five hours of training annually as a board member, 10 for new board members. But also, you have to get training in cybersecurity and safety. You have to get training in human trafficking. You have to get training in, I can't remember all the areas, Open Meetings Act. And every time the legislature meets, you have to have a legislative update so that you know what's going on. So it's not, it's not just all fun and games. There's a lot of information that you have to keep abreast of as a board member. And training is a big part of it. And, you know, most of the training occurs on a weekend. So you have to give up a weekend and go to a conference and sit through a bunch of training in a very cold conference room where they've turned the air down and very cold. That's my advice, is to take a sweater when you go.
No problem. One that I see probably every year is a parent will call and very upset about either how their kid's being treated at school or they're upset about the teacher. And so would you give an example, the best way to respond to that?
Well, I think you always respond to it and say, you know, "I understand your concern as a parent. We're all concerned about the way our children are treated." But in a school district, in a school district, you have set forth a board policy when people are unhappy. You start at the lowest possible level. If you're unhappy with how a teacher is treating your child, you should go see the principal. And if you don't get a response there, you can go talk to the superintendent. And if you're not happy with any of that, there's a grievance policy. If a student, I mean, and you can grieve anything. You can grieve the color of the paint in the gym. Doesn't mean we're going to change it for you, but you can grieve it. But if you have concerns, you always start at the lowest level. First and foremost, as a board member, that's not within your wheelhouse of power to go in and remedy a situation in a classroom. If a board member calls you, you would thank them. You would give them the superintendent's number and then you would ask the superintendent to help them schedule an appointment. You would let the superintendent know and the superintendent would help them schedule an appointment with their campus principal to resolve those issues. Same thing, you know, mom and daddy are mad because their baby's not getting to play on the varsity team or getting to be a starter. You know, the coach gets to make those decisions and they don't come to school board members and you don't get to weigh in on the decision of, maybe some boards do, but if you do, you're going to get in trouble. But if you start trying to tell the coach who to play or the superintendent who to hire and fire or if parents feel like they can call you and you're going to fix their problem, that's not good. That's not your role. Your role is oversight. And I do think you empathize with the parent and let them know that you do understand their concern. And it may be a perception issue where they don't understand everything that's going on or they weren't given all the information. You don't know the answer to that, but you have to recognize that they do feel like they have a problem. But your goal is to redirect them to the individual who can help them solve that problem. And number two, if it ends up at the grievance level, if you're so involved and you've done so much work already, then I think it's inappropriate for you to sit in on a grievance hearing if your mind is already made up and you can't sit in a fair and impartial manner at a grievance hearing. So you're better off redirecting that, the day-to-day operations, which includes dealing with parents and students, to your superintendent. Because in reality, that's the only person this board supervises.
Mr. Edwards, when I do that quite often, before I hang up, what I always advise you? Good luck.
Good luck, yes. Good luck. So, do you have any questions? No?
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down.
Always enjoy coming down here and visiting with the fine folks in Bastrop and I will see y'all very soon.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, before we adjourn here, as y'all can see from our actions, this is Mr. Edwards' last school board meeting. Congratulations.
You guys are supposed to clap.
And he's trying to dodge any type of recognition or anything. So I figured I had to do it here while we had a call meeting. But Mr. Edwards, thank you. It's been an honor and a pleasure working with you. Outstanding job. Took us through some unbelievable challenges, some valleys, some highs. And we know this is something that you've been talking about for several years. And when was the right timing? And definitely appreciate your perseverance, your energy, your commitment. You in no way seem burned out to me. And I did try to encourage him to stay longer, but his mind is made up or Meredith's mind is made up. And so I want to definitely thank her for sticking it out with you and it was awesome. And how many years you been here with the district?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I'm complete eighteen, yes.
That is awesome. So anyways, thank you very, very much. Any other board would like to, board member would like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say it's been a pleasure working with you. You always take our calls and you may not always give me what I want, but you've always been absolutely honest and just a pleasure to work with. And not only that, but I think you've assembled a great team. So thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
And I'll just say one little thing to piggyback on that. Barry, you definitely are the most approachable superintendent I've ever met in my life. I've always been scared of them. So the reality is that I think all the administrators and staff can agree that you had an open-door policy for a long time. And, you know, things don't always go just perfectly. But, you know, we have our bumps in the road and things we've got to manage and push on. But you definitely got us over several of the humps. And I've been proud to be a community member and just be part of some of the milestones along the way. So, thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
And by building that profile, before we hire Mr. Edwards or interview anybody, that was the number one thing that the input from the community and the staff was, was somebody approachable. And so I'll never forget that. And so Barry, thanks for continuing to do that away. Obviously, you can't make everybody happy with the direction or the decision you make, but we really do appreciate it. So, any other comments? All right, any objections to adjourned this meeting?
No.
If there are none, meetings adjourn.